I'd like to call this meeting here in the York City Council of Order. Autumn, would you please come roll?
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Marmee.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie. And Ms. Hall. Here.
We have eight here this evening and two absent, Mr. Blake and Mr. Guthrie. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the invocation by Mrs. Floyd. Please stand.
Put your heads, please. Almighty God, we thank you for this Fourth of July weekend. The weather until now was wonderful, and we appreciate that. We thank you that we had founding fathers who had the ability in seventeen seventy-six and the fortitude, the courage to declare the freedoms that they did. And it's through those freedoms that and the Constitution have awaited us that basically allowed us to be able to be here tonight and to make those decisions. We ask that you be with us as we make decisions tonight and that you grant us guidance and wisdom as we do so. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may be on the agenda tonight that they'd like to discuss. Do we have anything? Mrs. Floyd.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Blake and Mr. Guthrie from counsel tonight.
Motion to excuse Mr. Blake and Mr. Guthrie by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Marmee. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you. Anything else for caucus this evening? I could add, since we haven't been here and I forgot my advocate tonight, we have half of the hottest new couple in town, I noticed, from the coffee shop debate from you and Mr. Guthrie. Was there anything you'd like to add on, Mr. Cost, or should we just go?
Just, just, thank you.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Guthrie would appreciate that as well. Next, we have the minutes for the June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Is our motion approved thus?
So.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, and one from economic development. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, we have under reports from city officials, we have two from Barb Joes and one from our honor, Stephen Johnson. Also, without objections, those will be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have three, one from Paul Moran and two from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Also, without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. Autumn, would you please read the public hearing? We'll open the public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the York City Council shall take action upon ordinance number fourteen dash ten A on July seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Said ordinance accepts changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as one eighty-eight D.O. Drive, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from North Township to M.B., medium intensity business district, and combining said lot with the adjoining property known as two oh six D.O. Drive, Newark, Ohio, and designating the classic, excuse me, designating the zoning classification of combined lot as M.B., medium intensity business district.
Thank you, Autumn. You've heard the reading of fourteen dash ten. Are there any pros or cons on fourteen dash ten at this public hearing? Anyone like to speak on this either way? Anyone? Seeing that, we will close the public hearing. Next, we will have fourteen dash ten read for a second, second reading.
Ordinance fourteen dash ten by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as one eighty-eight D.O. Drive, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of North Township to L.B., limited intensity business district.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash ten. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost.
I'd like to move to adopt fourteen ten.
Motion to adopt fourteen ten by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Marmee. Any discussion on fourteen dash ten?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cost.
I need to move to amend fourteen ten to fourteen ten A.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Marmee. Mr. Cost, what is fourteen ten dash A? You want to give us a synopsis of that?
I think Mr. Sassen is going to provide us with that explanation.
Would you like Mr. Sassen to give us a little? If he would be of your kind. Mr. Sassen.
Mr. President, thank you. This is a bit of a convoluted zoning issue that began several years ago, actually, when two oh six D.O. Drive annexed into the city, went through the zoning process, and was designated at that time as an L.B. The business that is currently on that site is doing well and is looking to expand. Recent months, a lot that is known as one eighty-eight D.O. Drive was annexed into the city by the same owner, and the business is seeking to expand onto both of these lots. It was a bit of a jigsaw puzzle for the engineer and the planning commission and myself to put this all together, but in order to allow for that expansion, it was recommended by the planning commission that the newly annexed lot, which is one eighty-eight, and the application was amended before planning commission to have that property zoned as M.B. or medium intensity business. That's incorporated in this amended ordinance fourteen dash ten A to actually designate one eighty-eight D.O. Drive as medium intensity business. It goes on, then, in order to allow for this expansion, since the properties are owned by the same person, they're going to be engaged in the same business, to recommend and is also contained in the ordinance fourteen dash ten A, that the lots known as one eighty-eight D.O. Drive and two oh six D.O. Drive be combined into one single lot owned by the same person for the same purpose. That then leaves you with two lots being combined with two different zoning designations, and so the planning commission addressed that as well, looking at what the business plan was, the intended use, being in favor of that business plan and that intended use, and reconciling those two zonings by saying that the planning commission recommended that this newly combined lot then be zoned as M.B., medium intensity business, and then added a fourth provision also with regard to the signage on the property that's contained in section four. So essentially, it was a bit of a jigsaw puzzle again by the planning commission. The planning commission has recommended the changes that are contained in fourteen dash ten A in order to allow these lots to combine for this business to expand and to do it in conformity with the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. See why you didn't want to explain it?
There's only about six months to figure this out.
Is there any other discussion on fourteen A? Mr. Raff.
I hate to bring this up now, but this is just a port of order question, and I'll let you guys figure it out what's right and what's wrong. Fourteen dash ten was not read for the public hearing. Fourteen dash ten A was read for public hearing, and I don't think fourteen ten A existed prior to even that because we have a photo diary.
I can answer that as well.
Mr. Sassen.
The correction after that was that this fourteen dash ten A was generated prior to the publication of tonight's agenda and prior to the publication in the newspaper based upon the recommendation that the planning commission was making to city council. As a result, the public notice included and the reading tonight included what the planning commission recommended so that there would be, for lack of a better term, full disclosure to any interested parties who might be interested in not what was the original proposal, but what is the ultimate proposal as it's come back from the planning commission. So that's why it was read as fourteen dash ten A. That's why it was put in the paper as the proposal being M.B. and not L.B. as the original application said.
So what you're saying is what we did was okay?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen, again. Any other discussion on?
I can elaborate if you'd like.
Mr. Marmee.
Yeah, I can just say that this is just a part of a difficult process with this entire project, and I'm so glad that it's finally coming to the end stages, and we're going to have a great business up in the north end of Newark. And I just, it's already a great business, and it's just expanding, and it's not only going to draw in more patrons from Newark, Ohio, but all around Licking County and even outside of the county. And it's just, it's great to see a small business just grow like this and do so great. And I'm glad that we were able to work this out, even though there were some difficulties in the process, not only with this, but also with the annexation and everything else. And I'm very happy for the business owner and also their employees and their patrons. And I think it's great that this is happening.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else on fourteen dash A on the amendment before we vote on the amendment? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote on the amendment.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash ten has been amended to fourteen dash ten A. Any discussion on the amended fourteen dash ten A? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash ten A has passed. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the first section of comments from citizens. It's a time for you to come up and be able to tell us anything you'd like to tell us about. This is not a question and answer session with council. This is just a time for us to be able to hear your opinion. Some better than others. Mrs. Loomis.
Rhonda Loomis, eight seventy West Church Street, New York. During the closing comments, June sixteenth, Councilman Roletta made a statement pertaining to paving and the levy that was repeated in the Advocate in which she said, "As we all go to the ballot this fall, we need to remember why we are in this situation in the first place. Our current governor and state legislature have increased spending by eleven billion. I think this is indefensible and unacceptable. So when we all go to vote on this tax issue, I think we also need to think about who we are electing to be our governor and state senator. First, your job is this city. Your job is to make sound decisions for this city. And while I concur, the state cuts to local government funding is detrimental. You fail to mention, remember, or take accountability for placing our city in an even higher debt-to-income ratio by voting to increase salaries that will be, again, based on the information in these public meetings and the Advocate, by one million dollars. Prior to pointing fingers about indefensible and unacceptable spending, make sure you look at what you've done to the city budget. As a diverse group of citizens, it is not your job to tell us who to vote for. It is not your job to campaign for your party. It is your job to make sound financial decisions for the better of all citizens, not your campaign supporters or your party. You skirted the O.R.C. barely. Your wording, "barely," was legal. Be very careful."
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Loomis. Anyone else like to comment this evening on this first section of citizens' comments? Again, there's another section after the legislation.
Tim Waldron, one sixty-seven South Penn Street. I'm going to say something. I want to know, do you guys think that people, taxpayers, this day, stupid? You guys, a couple weeks ago, you guys put a tax levy on the ballot, and then you guys turned the light around, and now you guys going to vote tonight and give a rich guy that can afford his own taxes of this city a tax break on his buildings? Over the period of year, he had done this several times over the years, asked for tax breaks. He can pay for his own taxes. That building is not a historic building. It's just an old school. Maybe it's time for us to start tearing down some of these old buildings and build new model day buildings. They might last longer. Look at what we're going to do down here at the fire station. We're going to spend good money, tax paid money, to make a new building look old. Why? Why are we going to make a new building look old like we did at the PlayStation? Is that, I mean, why are people paying taxes? I mean, make a building look old? Don't vote for it. Vote for fourteen nineteen. That building isn't worth the money that he wanted to put in it. That building is not worth the tax breaks he getting going get. He did up here on Locust Street, he got a tax break. He did it up on other places, he got tax breaks. And we are out there paying our taxes. How come he can't pay his own taxes? If he could not afford taxes down there on that building, then he should not have bought it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Anyone else this evening? There's a second section after the legislation. Let's move on to ordinances on the second reading, fourteen dash sixteen.
Ordinance fourteen dash sixteen by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the Department of Public Service Division of Street Maintenance by creating one additional crew leader and abolishing one physician of equipment operator.
You've heard your second reading of fourteen dash sixteen. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Floyd.
I make a motion that we pass fourteen dash sixteen.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bug. Is there any discussion on fourteen dash sixteen?
I think the only thing is that it will just make the running of the street department more efficient, that we'll have crew leaders out there to make sure that if there's another street that needs plowed or another pothole that needs to be filled, it can be done. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash sixteen passes, eight zero. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, fourteen dash eighteen.
Ordinance fourteen dash eighteen by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as three ninety-eight Eastern Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of single-family residence, R.H., high-density zoning district, to G.O., general office zoning district.
That'll be held for a second reading. Oh, that's from the planning commission, yes, sir. That will be from the planning commission, and then we'll have it back for a second reading. Next, we have fourteen dash nineteen.
Ordinance fourteen dash nineteen by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance approving the historic designation of one twelve West Main Street as a local historic property and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of fourteen dash nineteen. It is declaring an emergency, so it only has one reading. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Raff.
Would you make a motion to adopt fourteen dash nineteen?
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on fourteen dash nineteen? Mr. Raff.
This is declaring an emergency because we need to meet a timing deadlines for the public benefit and welfare of the city because if we don't meet those deadlines, construction on the building will be significantly weakened and open for rigorcy and vandalism. We prefer to have construction start on that sooner rather than later.
Mr. Raff? Any others? Mrs. Floyd.
I just want to say that basically, he's applying for tax credits from the state. That doesn't mean there's only a certain amount of money that is available, and he's asking for part of the pot. And I know from things I've heard with Lizard, I'll say it's a lot of people work. I mean, there's a lot of work goes into it to try to get it. And as I said last week, I am happy to see that building kept since my building was torn down. I'm sorry. I had to get that in there.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmee.
Yes, I just want to add on to what Mrs. Floyd said, that we are just a part of the process in order for him to attempt to get any kind of state tax credits, and it will have to meet certain criteria that the state does look at. However, we have to put it into our pool of historic areas before it can even be considered as a historic building.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else?
Mr. President. Mr. Robb. Yes, I'd just like to say I do believe this should be labeled as a historic property. I think it is a building that's important to our city's history. It was the former home of Newark High School and Ohio State Newark. I attended intermediate school there, and I would much rather see the building have a meaningful use than sit empty. However, I do have some concern about using the emergency clause in this case. Our city charter says each emergency ordinance or resolution shall declare that it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, or welfare. And I think we all want to see more development downtown, but I think it's somewhat of a stretch to try to fit the project into this definition. I will be in support of this project, and I understand there are deadlines, but I just think we need to be sure we're conscientious in following the city charter that is approved by our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Anyone else? Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen nineteen has passed. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, nineteen dash forty-seven.
Resolution fourteen dash forty-seven by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing the director of public service to sell certain city property as described herein by Internet options.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash forty-seven. What does your wish?
Mr. President. Mr. Cost. Make a motion to move fourteen dash forty-seven.
Motion by Mr. Cost to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion on fourteen dash forty-seven? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash forty-seven has passed. Next, we have fourteen dash forty-eight.
Resolution fourteen dash forty-eight by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash forty-eight. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to adopt resolution fourteen dash forty-eight.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on fourteen dash forty-eight? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash forty-eight has passed. Next, we have on the second reading, fourteen dash fifty.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution of intent to vacate a portion of a sixteen-foot wide alley as shown on the plaque of the Wilkins Smith Place Edition as reported in Flat Book Four at page one fourteen of the Licking County Flat Records located between Eddie Street and Central Avenue.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash fifty. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that we pass.
Motion by Mr. Johnson to adopt. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on fourteen dash fifty? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash fifty has passed. We have about five of these this evening. Mr. Sassen, correct me if I'm wrong, but after we pass these intent, then they go back to the street committee to council to, for further discussion.
Actually, there'll be another piece of legislation on the ordinance to actually vacate the alley. This is just an expression to the public that council intends to do that. It requires another piece of legislation to actually do it.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Next, we have fourteen dash fifty-one.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-one by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution of intent to vacate a portion of Market Street, a portion of a sixteen-and-a-half foot wide alley, and a portion of a twenty-four point seven-five foot wide alley as shown on the plaque of the P.M. Waddles Edition as recorded in Flat Book Two at page one twenty-eight of the Licking County Flat Records located south of West Main Street and west of South Fifth Street.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash fifty-one. What does your wish?
Move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Johnson to adopt, second by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bug.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie. And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Fourteen dash fifty-one has passed. Next, we have fourteen dash fifty-two.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-two by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, a resolution of intent to vacate a portion of a ten-foot wide alley as shown on the plaque of the David M. Moore's Edition as recorded in Flat Book Three at page thirty, thirty-one of the Licking County Flat Records located north of Alley Street.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash fifty-two. What is your wish?
I move to adopt.
Motion by Mr. Johnson to adopt, second by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion? Seeing that, Autumn, please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake. Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fourteen dash fifty-two has passed. Next, we have fourteen dash fifty-three.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-three by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt. A resolution of intent to vacate a portion of a sixteen-foot wide alley, as shown as originally part of the Outlot sixty-eight on the plaque of the Williams C. Mahol's addition, as recorded in Flat Book One, at page one thirty, one thirty-one of the Licking County flat records located north of Cambria Street.
You've heard your second reading of fourteen dash fifty-three. What does you wish?
I move we adopt.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on fourteen dash fifty-three? Seeing none, all please call a roll of the vote on fourteen dash fifty-three.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake? Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fourteen dash fifty-three has passed. Next, on the second reading, we have fourteen dash fifty-four.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-four by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt. A resolution of intent to vacate a portion of an eleven-point-five-four-foot wide alley and being part of the rideaway on the east side of the lot sixteen and Warner's Allotment in the City of Newark, Flat Book Five, page ten, located north of Dickerson Street.
You've heard your second reading of fourteen dash fifty-four. What does you wish?
I move we adopt.
Second by Mr. Marmee. Any discussion on fourteen dash fifty-four? Seeing none, all please call a roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake? Mr. Bugg?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie? And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fourteen dash fifty-four has passed. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, fourteen dash fifty-five.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-five by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to enter into a right to indecent agreement and easement agreement on behalf of the City of Newark for certain real property located at Levin Park, Sharon Valley Road, North Ohio, parcel zero five four dash two eight six three five zero dash zero one point zero zero zero, Lot Five, consisting of twenty-one point three zero acres.
Fourteen dash fifty-five will be held for a second reading. Next, we have fourteen dash fifty-six.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-six by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
Fourteen dash fifty-six will be held for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have fourteen dash fifty-seven.
Resolution fourteen dash fifty-seven by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for financial support from the State of Ohio two thousand and fourteen major works branch fund.
Fourteen dash fifty-seven will be held for a second reading. And that is all of our legislation for the city. You gotta keep your attention. Next this evening, we have our second section of citizens' comments. Do we have anyone who would like to make a comment?
Thank you, sir. Paul Moran, sixty-three North Fourth Street. I have issues dealing with health, safety, and waste. I wanna address the biggest ice storm in Newark, which is the former Westinghouse plant on West Main Street and Jefferson Street. There are broken windows out the belt, the entire facility, no matter what direction you're looking at, there's completely broken windows. On Jefferson Street's side, windows that were covered up, the boards are now come off. There's hanging there. There's pigeons and other birds going in and out, which is posing a safety and health problem right there. The current architect is Midstate Warehouses Incorporated. There's just so much neglect with this property that the city needs to outspend it. We're all of problems with it. Address it, the owners, get it all resolved. Next, the telephone going down the street here. There's a section of the south wall along the alley that's come apart. It's just falling out. And just a matter of time before there's a big block that will be out to the alley. More neglect. I don't understand why utility of any kind without their own building deteriorates and not do anything about it, which is other wind streams ownership. These structures are partly used and they're partly not used. So you have a lot of use, but most of it's unused in both these structures. Like the Westinghouse, I think they're just using one building, the rest are just vacant and just deteriorating rapidly. It's very unfortunate that people coming into Newark from West Main have to see a big old factory building that's in a condition that's in. Now, our telephone going, people remark about palm trees and beautiful art deco on it, and they take pictures of it. I don't think they see what I see, or anybody going through the alley there, the big, where the walls coming apart, and they will block, they're gonna fall out of the shop. Another issue. I'm confused and perplexed. I mean, we're talking about tight budgets and trying to save money in the city, but here we got these railroad type crossing gates here over our parking lot. They're electronic. I just don't understand that. If that was used, it'd be General Farm money or grant. It shows that the city has to compose a safety hazard to pedestrians. It's got a picture on them. I mean, what if they were to malfunction, like during an electrical storm or something? Maybe a day or two later, somebody walking by, they get struck. I mean, the city's liable for that. I just don't understand why they were even put in. I don't see any progress there. I'm lost on that one. Maybe somebody can fill me in. Got them on that one. I just wanna share all these items with you. Pass out fires, everybody, it's here. Those are the, Licking County Transit is having a meeting, have two meetings, once tomorrow at eleven o'clock, and the next one is next Wednesday, six o'clock in the evening. They're going to reduce their services. So they're having meetings at seven forty-five East Main Street. Things are just gonna look like they're moving forward, whether at the city level or county level, since there's a lot of things going backwards, setbacks. I mean, why would they cut back services when there's so many riderships throughout the county? So I hope we can learn some more things by attending these meetings, see what's really going on, and hope we can be more informed about things like these railroad type crossings. I had no idea that they were even gonna be put in, or I would've spoke out against them. My thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Anyone else this evening? Anyone from the administration? Our award-winning auditor, Mr. Johnson? The honorable law director, Mr. Sassen? Mayor Hall?
Yes, just a couple things. July third, I don't know if you knew it, can see if you see, it was a great event, as they have every year, and I surely wanna thank the campus and surely the foundation that puts that together. It's great for the community and a thousand, a thousand people. Obviously, the weather's great. Also, we've got a couple of local athletes that have done great and got recognition. Grant Russell was named from Newark High School to advocate two thousand and fourteen male athlete of the year. Well deserved, very earned during his time at Newark High, and played three sports, of course. And then at Newark Catholic High School, Hunter Nance was advocated two thousand and fourteen baseball player of the year, and as a sidebar noted, is a model works for the city of Newark and our water department. So we're very proud of both those youths as they achieve those statuses, and we wish them the best as we want in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. First this evening, we have Mr. Johnson. We've been waiting on this. Don't pass.
No, I just, I concur that the fireworks display and everything on the third was absolutely outstanding, and fortunately, we can be in our backyard and watch them go down there and go all the way down through campus. And it was very good, and I think it's been a good Fourth of July weekend for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you. Need to call a finance committee meeting, and without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Ratt?
Thank you. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Argiles. They had an article in the Advocate today. I don't know if it was in print, but it was at least online. I know they went through a long, tedious process, applying for tax credits that lasted over several years. They certainly are sticking their necks out and putting in a huge investment into their business as well as into downtown Newark. I'm excited for them that they're finally gonna get to start construction and hopefully be completed by January, and wish them all the best. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Mr. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank Brenda Combs from Newark High School for attending the meeting tonight.